This is the regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee County of Cochise and State of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019 at 7:00 PM at the City Hall Building, 19, I'm sorry, 915 South Tolerville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornada, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Joanie Giacominno.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson is excused. Mayor Pro Tim Anakline.
Here.
City staff Ashley Coronado, city clerk Carrie Bagley, finance director Dwayne Wallace, operations manager Alberti Chavez, police chief Aldo Arduño, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For the moment of silence, I'd like us to think about a couple things, reflect on the fact that we have in Bisbee lost three of our great townspeople that people have looked up to and talked about for many years, and that would be Mary Adams, Reva McIntyre, and Gilbert Reyes, as well as the, so far, the 23 people in Alabama and Georgia due to the tornado. We could just take a minute and reflect on that and how lucky we are to be here. Thank you. Would you...
(audience clapping) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God our, and here we are, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you all. Thanks for being here. Perhaps the noisiest chairs. I have no proclamations or announcements, so we're going to go right to the call to the public, and we'll start off with Nicholas Knight. Welcome, Mr. Knight.
Thank you. Nicholas Knight, Chris, Shedd Street, Bisbee, Arizona. Great to be back with you again. Apologize about not being here as often as I might, but one has to work and one has to. Some wiser people than I have said that if you do not learn the lessons of history, you are doomed to repeat them, and it seems like a cycle is coming on like a tsunami for us right now. As I recall, when I first arrived, Mr. Hawkins was the city manager presiding over all the things that are currently still major problems for the city, none of which were actually addressed or got better on his watch or under his tenure and possibly got worse, at which point he was, as I recall, asked to leave and left under a cloud, with a lot of people very pleased that we had finally opened up the possibility of getting somebody in that would do the kind of work that needs to be done to move Bisbee forward. So I'm quite concerned that he's even in the running to be city manager. He had his shot. It didn't work. Why would we want to bring that back and try it again? That doesn't seem to make any sense to me. If he was that good, why would it be possible for us to bring him back? Wouldn't Winslow be hanging on with a tooth and nail? Wouldn't he have been headhunted away from Winslow for someplace else? And why are we rushing yet again to put people into places when we've got some time to step? There is not time to get somebody up to speed in a real deep sense between now and when the budget process started. That was bad timing all around if we leave the city manager in place during that. At this point, I think I'm concerned about making sure your finance person's stated for the budget process, because that's the last thing we need is that, that holding in. I'm quite concerned about rushing in a community development person. The last person I'm aware of that was in there was Mr. Charlie, who was probably one of the top five most divisive people in the history of Bisbee, at least in the last 13 years that I've been here. Did nothing to develop the community, did a number of things to actively take things apart or prevent community development, which I spoke to, to the council, and if you want to go back into the minutes, are there in the minutes if you want to find out the specifics of that. The other thing about community development is that's all one of good, but it doesn't help our bonding lines particularly. It's nice to have a community and have things developed, but right now we've got a number of things that we're doing for ourselves that are going to be much more attractive than somebody that a community development director. If you want to bring money in to attend to some of the things that we've got hanging, like our budget deficit and the pension problem and all that, then we need a tourism director who I can show you in the bottom, in the budget lines, has brought in money and is something that will actively help us to move forward. So why are we creating or recreating positions that aren't going to bring us money, but are actually going to cause us to spend money and dragging our feet to getting somebody into a position that is easily provable makes money for the city? Right now, the only things we're not flush on is money, so we really need to bring that forward. And if this isn't anything other than my own opinion, what about that $5,000 study from Local First that you guys commissioned? This was one of the things that was brought up. Is tourism is one of the few things we've got right now at this moment that we can actively develop? So you've spent the money on that, are the results not to your liking or implicit? Did you pick the wrong person to do the study? I'm confused about how all this is going, because we look to you for leadership, and we look to you to help our, help take us through rough waters to a calmer, safer harbor somewhere down the line, and right now it looks awful like it's dealing with the world for, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for, I'd like to thank you for your service to the community, and I especially want to thank you for the unanimous resolution last meeting, the resolution condemning the use of razor wire on the border fence. And I'm here tonight to urge you to put a discussion item on the agenda and perhaps an action item. All of you said you'd like to follow up, and just the resolution wasn't enough, and I agree with you, and so I'm urging you to put it on your next meeting so that it can be discussed and ideas could be brought up about what could be done. Yesterday, I received a reply from the questions that I shared with you that I posed to the Customs and Border Patrol Tucson Sector. And in reply to my question of why the wire was installed at the Naco Port of Entry, I was told that it was requested by the Border Patrol in high-risk urban areas, high-risk urban areas, commonly exploited by criminal smuggler organizations. I think that's the key phrase here, high-risk urban areas. Can anyone by any stretch of the imagination define our Naco community as a high-risk urban area? Maybe the border does need strengthening in remote areas in the desert, but it's ready to wire necessary right here, right at the port of entry where there's 24/7 border patrol presence? Did anyone in authority think this through before deciding to cover our fence at the port of entry with razor wire, dangerous razor wire? Given that, number one, the Customs and Border Patrol has 1,200 border patrol agents assigned to the Naco area alone. Number two, Cochise County has eight 80-foot integrated surveillance towers. Number three, Cochise County has 11 remote video systems. And four, the Sheriff's Department installed and monitors 50 remote cameras to identify and apprehend undocumented immigrants in Cochise County. Given all of this existing security at our, in our Naco sector, if anyone is crossing the border illegally, going over that double fence right at the Naco Port of Entry, and they need razor wire to stop them, then clearly someone is not doing their job. One can only conclude that the installation of razor wire is a political stunt to make our peaceful Naco Port of Entry seem to be a scary, dangerous place.
Thank you, Ms. Cornada.
I urge you to put it on the agenda.
Allison Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, the Mayor and Council, city staff, citizens. My name is Allison Williams. I'm the program coordinator of the Copper Queen Library. And actually, first, I'm also a board member of the Bisbee Bloomers, and the Bisbee Bloomers' mission is to beautify Bisbee and its environs, and the Bloomers voted to donate 20 plants to beautify our new city hall, so the plants you see around here, some of them, there are others, but we are happy to add a little green here. At the library, we are planning a new kind of DIY program. We have installed a smart screen in the YA room, and we're going to be showing the city council meetings the day after they occur. It's called Citizens Watch, where we have the ability to stream videos off YouTube and different news channels and movies and hook up laptops and have PowerPoints. So we're going to be utilizing this technology to show local and national government broadcasts that are interesting to you guys. The last thing I want to mention is that I'm very pleased to announce that the Copper Queen Library was nominated for a national award, the EXCO Excellence in Small and Rural Public Library Service Award. This award provides recognition and a $1,000 honorarium for a public library serving a population of 10,000 or less that demonstrates excellence of service to its community, as exemplified by an overall service program or a special program of significant accomplishment. The award honors a public library for all or any of the following: uniqueness of service of program, impact of program or service on community, and how the service or program will affect the future of the library and its community. And I'm very pleased to tell you that the Copper Queen Library has won its first national award, this EXCO Excellence in Small Public Libraries, and it will be announced at the ALA, the National American Library Association Conference in Washington, DC, in June. We are trying to get our library manager Jason McCoveyak there to accept that award in person. And the, the award, the program that we submitted was for the Copper Queen Library Annex in San Jose and serving that neighborhood in our community, and for our preschool literacy programs, and for our work with the BUSD and fostering literacy in our, in our community. And so, thank you, I'm very, very pleased.
Please pass our congratulations along to you.
Thank you.
Moving on to general business, accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $155,252.87.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second. Questions? Carry with none. All those in favor of paying accounts payable, say by this table. Aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carried unanimously. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. As opposed to A through double Z, we have an A. Eight, approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for use of brewery gout for Allison Bisbee Land to be held on Saturday, April 20th, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM midnight. Any, do we need to discuss this, or do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the park facility and right-of-way use permit for the use of brewery gout for Allison Bisbee Land to be held on Saturday, April 20th, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM midnight.
I'll second that. We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Cornada.
Councilmember Lindstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. New business, item number three, presentation of the City of Bisbee's annual audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2018 by Stephen Hall, CPA, Edinburgh. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, citizens of Bisbee, thanks for having me here tonight. It's my pleasure to be here to give you a report on our recently completed audit of the city's fiscal year 2018 financial activity. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Let's see if we can get it to Word.
It did earlier, so we'll see.
All right. What a natural. As I mentioned, we're here to discuss fiscal year 2018 and the recently completed audit. See if they click to work. Perfect. Okay. First of all, the question that everybody asks, or what everybody wants to know when I come and give the presentations is, did the city pass, or did our organization pass the audit? And the answer to that question is yes. The city passed, passed their audit. In relation with, to the audit, we are required to issue three separate reports. The first being our auditor's report, and in that report, we issue an unmodified or a clean opinion, meaning that in our opinion, the financial statements of the city barely represent the city's financial position and the results of the city's operations for fiscal year 2018. We are also required to issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting, and I'm pleased to report that there were no material weaknesses noted and no significant deficiencies noted. We also issue a report on the city's compliance with state requirements. There were two minor issues there, and that the city over-expended their budget in the Streets Fund and in the Bisbee Bus Fund. Let's look a little bit at the city's financial health. Let's look at dollars and cents for a little while. So the city's net position or equity was a little over $9 million. That means if you were to take all of the city's assets, back off the liabilities, that residual amount is the city's equity, and that was a whole over $9 million. And over time, increases or decreases in net position or equity is a good indicator as to whether the financial health of the city is getting better or getting worse. And for fiscal year 2018, the city's net position increased by $168,000, so a small Let's look at a few of the funds individually. This is the general fund, and this is the balance sheet. The top line represents the general fund's assets. The second line represents the equity, and the bottom line represents the liabilities. The general fund continues to report a healthy fund balance. You'll notice that there was a large spike in assets and equity for fiscal year 2018, and that is a direct result of the $2.6 million the city received in insurance proceeds from City Hall when it burned. Those monies were received, but they haven't been spent yet, for the most part. Keep, keep in mind that the, the fund balance represents equity on a current management focus. In other words, in the general fund, we do not report fixed assets and long-term debt. Those were in the, in the government-wide statements that we initially discussed, but on the general fund's balance sheet itself, those items are not included. And here's the general fund cash trend. You can see that cash has been pretty consistent over the past four out of five years, with the large increase coming into 2018 as a result of the insurance proceeds. And here's the revenue and expense trend. In the general fund, you expect, over time, the fund to break even. You don't expect it to run large losses. You don't expect it to make a lot of money either. It's here to meet the needs of the citizens, not to make money. And so that's what we see over the, for the past five years, where revenues and expenditures have largely mirrored one another, the exception being 2018, again, where the large influx of money came from the insurance proceeds. If we back off the insurance proceeds, then over the past five years, expenditures cumulatively have exceeded revenues by a little over $91,000, almost $92,000. The enterprise funds, these are the utility funds of the city, wastewater, sanitation, and Queen's Mine. The enterprise funds are reported on the full accrual basis of accounting. They're reported in the same manner that businesses are reported. The long-term debt, the capital assets, depreciation, all of that is reported in these fund financial statements. This is to provide for depreciation for future capital requirements, and enterprise funds, typically you expect to report that income or revenues higher than expenditures, simply because, over time, these systems, the infrastructure for the utility funds deteriorate and they need to be replaced. So let's take a look at the wastewater fund. Cumulatively, over the past five years, revenues have exceeded expenses by a little over $1 million. This is largely because in 2015, the fund received nearly $2 million in grant revenues. If the grant revenues are disregarded, the fund would have cumulatively reported almost nearly $1 million of expenses in excess of revenues. Here's the cash trend of the wastewater fund. You can see that cash has been very stable until 2018, and there's a good reason for this. In 2018, you recall that you refinanced a bunch of debt in the wastewater fund. So cash went down, debt went down as well. It's not like the fund all of a sudden just took a nosedive into oblivion. It's because the cash was used to pay down debt. That's why you're seeing that decrease in 2018. At the beginning of the year, outstanding loans and bonds were a little over $1 million, and at the end of the year, the outstanding loans and bonds were about $8.5 million. So the decrease in cash relates directly to the decrease in debt. Here's the sanitation fund. Cumulatively, over the past five years, expenses have exceeded revenues by about $250,000, but you saw that trend reverse in 2018, and 2018 revenues exceeded expenses by $167,000, and that's largely due to the rate increases that occurred, I believe, in August of 2017, if I remember right. The sanitation fund continues to not report any cash, mainly because of those losses that we saw in prior years, but hopefully we'll see that improve over the next few years due to those rate increases I mentioned. And last but not least, the Queen Mine Fund. Cumulatively, over the past five years, revenues have exceeded expenses by $368,000. The Queen Mine Fund is doing well. And here's the cash trend. You can see that cash has progressively increased in the Queen Mine Fund. Over the past five years, it's increased by roughly 80%. And those were the highlights of fiscal year 18 that I wanted to discuss with you. First and foremost, I wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide these services to the city, and secondly, to give my sincere thanks to the employees of the city that helped us with the audit. We, we come in, we ask for a lot of stuff, we bother a lot of people, and the employees of the city have always been very gracious and very willing to help us. In particular, Carrie and Cindy, they get the brunt of it, and they have just been great, great to give us what we need to complete the audit. And with that, I will be happy to field any questions, or if anything comes to mind at a later date, here's my contact information. Please feel free to contact me at any time. I'll be more than happy to respond to any inquiries or questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Council, have any questions? I guess we don't. Very good. But your phone may ring, remember? Carrie certainly knows how to get a hold of you. Thank you. Appreciate your services. Discussion of possible approval of Resolution R19-04, approving application for and possible administration of any and all fire prevention, safety, and communication systems-oriented grants written by old Bisbee Firewise team of grant writers, so long as such grants would directly benefit the city, not cost the city any additional money or resources, and so long as each, I'm sorry, such applications are pre-approved in writing by both the mayor and the chief of the Bisbee Fire Department, or the mayor and the chief of the Bisbee Police Department. This has come about because we do have several volunteer grant writers, and they are very busy, or meetings today about it, and they're finding that due to the windows on some of the grant timing, that they can't get it with the council in time to, for the councils en masse to say, that's a good idea, go get it. And the idea is, of course, that if we receive a grant, it does come to the council anyway. This is simply allowing them to go ahead and apply if the police chief says, yeah, we really need that, or the fire chief says, yeah, we really need that. Gives them the ability to do that without coming to council, but of course, it doesn't give them the ability to accept the grant. And, anything else?
Just, just so that council knows, if you do vote to approve this item, we're going to need to correct the current resolution that's in front of you. The resolution at the bottom, the second to the last paragraph where it says, now therefore be resolved, it, it failed to mention the, the police department, the chief of the police department. So we need to add his position in here to reflect that he and the mayor can approve, as well as the mayor and the fire chief. So it's just to be consistent, it was just inadvertently omitted on this one, so if you approve it, this one will not be signed, we'll correct it, correct it to match the motion.
Questions, council?
So can the fire chief and the police chief both agree?
What, the reason they're both named, the way it was explained to me is that the fire chief will approve any grants related to fire prevention and safety, whereas the police chief will approve any grants related to communication systems. So that's why they're both needed. They will be approving different types of grants, along with the mayor.
And they won't be under the same, the same dollar. And in this particular case, as an example, there's a lot of work being done on communications right now, and that is certainly Chief of Chavez is, is working on that, but that benefits both departments, and the fire chief is involved in those. And the fire chief is involved in those discussion results. Ms. Corrigan?
I just have a comment. I've spoken briefly with the Firewise, some people representing, the grant writers representing the Firewise group, so I have some idea of the equipment they're writing grants for. But is it possible for us to just talk a little bit about what these grants are going to be for, just so the public can hear it right now? Is there anyone here who's willing to do that?
Can I take a speaker's seat?
Oh, I would love that, though.
I didn't see you sitting in the middle there.
Good evening. Thanks for, thank you very much for considering this resolution and this request. So currently, the ads right now are for infrastructure for the communication system, which is, I don't know if you want to get into the nitty-gritty, and I don't know if actually I could, I don't have my papers with me to explain it, but basically, do you want to just maybe say exactly what that is?
So for the police department side, and actually for the fire department as well, one of the grants we're looking at, or some funding that we're looking at, is to replace our Beijing radio communications infrastructure. We tried to get some of that replaced last year through the budget cycle, but unfortunately, there just wasn't enough funds to do that. And now we have a group of very motivated citizens who come forward and offer their help to us, and we definitely, I can't express how much we appreciate them coming to help us do this, because it's definitely needed, not only for the police department, but for the fire department as well, which allows us to respond and address situations safely and appropriately. So that's the one big one from my side, but there's a lot of things that they're looking to help us with. You know, we're short on vehicles. We're short on computer equipment. The fire department needs additional equipment as well. Public Works, you know, there's a lot of things that we're talking about, like how this group can help us find those dollars that are out there available so we can move forward.
And one was a garbage truck, also a small garbage truck. The other was, what, two ambulances, refitted ambulances. Those were the main priorities that we identified today. There's a, we have a whole list of equipment for the fire department that they're working on, getting some quotes so that we know what to write for for that, turn up here, you know, specific kinds of tools for firefighting, especially wildfires. What else? We, the whole fire suppression system and the bridges need to be replaced. That's a huge, huge, we tried to take that, pull that one apart today and take a look at it, and it's enormous, so that's going to be multi-year. But, you know, it starts with us, these first steps. So basically, what we're asking for is just sort of a blanket agreement that we can write for these things, and that, you know, if we do get funding, of course, we would bring it back to you, and you would accept the funding, or not, depending what your thoughts were on that.
Yeah.
Did they go to the training last month up at the state, your regular years? There was a lead a city and towns.
Yeah, I went to that.
Oh, you went to that? So did they offer you any?
They recommended that. They recommended this. They said, for certain, like federal grants, FEMA grants, and certain state grants, they want to see this resolution that you said it was okay to go for the grant. And then they want the resolution that said, "Yes, we accept the grant." So just certain grants need that, others don't, but this way it just covers it.
What, did they give you other resources, like where to find other grants at, too?
Yep. Yeah, yeah. Loads of places. It's just a numerous amount of work, is what it is. Yeah. And then also, just so you know, I think maybe you're already aware of this, but in Nellie Lane on March 20th, our FEMA officers are here, and they are going to be discussing the disaster mitigation grants. And we would qualify, if we wrote for them and they agreed, we would qualify for the pre-disaster mitigation grants for some of our fire suppression systems. So that's an important meeting. I'll attend that, and we'll specifically discuss some of the fire suppression problems within the city, and go from there, and just take our advice, and figure out how to get some of these things done.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All the work you guys are doing is really wonderful. Thank you.
I move to approve resolution R-19-04 approving application for and possible administration of any and all fire prevention, safety, and communication system-oriented grants written by Old Visby Firewise team of grant writers. So long as such grants would directly benefit the city, not cost the city any additional money or resources, and so long as such applications are pre-approved in writing by both the mayor and the chief of Visby Fire Department, or the mayor and the chief of Visby Police Department.
Second. Excuse me. May I ask you to add one more sentence?
Sure.
And that is with the changes as proposed by Ms. Ordu.
With the changes as proposed by our city attorney, Ms. Ordu.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that.
And you'll second that one? All right. Any further discussion, council? Ms. Cornetto?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Number five, discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-19-02, amended the appendix of the zoning regulations to bring the zoning use matrix into compliance with the text of the zoning regulation. And Mr. Gardner, this is the second time I'm reading, correct?
This, I believe, is the first time you've appeared here, Mr. Gardner. I'm going to have to hear your question.
Okay, thank you. I'm ahead of myself. I'd like to do these quickly. So what we have here, I'm not sure if it showed up in color in your packets, that you have, if color copies will subtract changes, if the council would prefer to see those. The changes are very minor, and as stated, they are to bring the matrix showing the uses in the zoning regulations into compliance with the text of the regulations. So, okay, some minor text changes, some of which go along with the item that was approved two or three meetings ago regarding adding the bars and taverns to the mixed-use district. That also requires a change in this matrix, and we neglected to capture it at that time. So you're seeing the changes in red, and really, all of them are on the second page in the service uses. It does show that the cocktail lounges and taverns are permitted, adding a red X in the CM2, and changing on-premise consumption to off-premise consumption, which was clearly a clerical error. It adds the hotel and convention centers permitted in the C3 and C4 zoning districts, which matches the text, and adds the restaurants in all of the C and CM2 districts, which, again, matches the text. So nothing is actually changing in the rules, it's just adding clarity to the document to ensure that people who look at one and look at the other, the text versus this matrix, see the same thing. So unless there's any questions, just drop it up. Questions, council? Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your help on this, as always, even if I was ahead of myself. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance 0-19-2, amend the appendix of the zoning regulations to bring the zoning use matrix into compliance with the text of the zoning regulations.
I'll second.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discussion of possible approval to enter into a contract with Compliment Electrical, ETC, LLC to complete the installation of the grassy park lighting project. The total cost is $55,000, with 60%, that'd be $33,000 paid upfront. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mary. Counsel? As some of you know, we've already brought the plan before council and before the Parks Committee. Supervisor English from Cochise County has pledged an amount of money to approve the lighting at Grassy Park and some of the safety. One of the things that I'm really interested in is actually lighting the crosswalk there, that's the blind crosswalk between the convention center and the park. We did go out the bid, and we received three local bids. We paid the most responsive bid, which happened to be Compliment Electrical. We, it will be overseen, Al Hopper, who is the architect who designed the lighting project, he will be helping out with that. And we do recommend approval. Thank you. And I might add that this is, just so everybody understood, this is no money coming out of the city coffers. This is Ms. English's discretionary funds to the board of supervisors, that she has indicated that she will pay for this through her discretionary funds. So it's not costing us anything. Yes, Mary?
I have a question. Dorian, when we were talking about this before?
Yes.
You also mentioned the changing the lights out in front of the glare. Is that going to be part of this, or is that going to be something separate?
No, no, no. That's something else, clearly. There were some lights already changed out in front of the glare with the old style, but that has nothing to do with this. This is strictly for the grassy park. That was the scope of this. This is what, this is English's line, so, you know, it means you get down there, so.
Yeah, you may recall this is uplighting the building. The building will be clear at night, and that will also then allow that light to spill over, so people walking across on the crosswalk should be safe. Any other questions, Mr. Wallace? That's great. All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve entering into a contract with Compliment Electric, and Compliment LLC to complete the installation of the grassy park lighting project. The total cost is $55,000, 60%, $33,000 paid upfront.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornetto?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Cornetto, could we literally tomorrow morning fire off the bid sheet to her?
Sure.
And the contracts? I'll come in and sign the contract, and then we'll get that to her, because I started today, and she wants to write us a check.
Yes.
I'm sure there's a company that likes that, too. Thank you. Number seven, discussion of possible approval to enter into a contract with K-E and G to complete the Tin Town drainage and pavement project phase two. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mary. As mayor and council and public, this has been a project that was started actually during Tom Klein, he was here. He began all this whole thing with CPG and CECO to get drainage sorted, drainage and flood control, taking care of the Tin Town. We went out the bid, we had a lot of response the first time we went out the bid, but we could not even get the base bid done for phase two of what the money we had available. So we had, us, along with the engineers that were selected in CECO, looked at the plans, and, you know, we had some assortable knowledge of where, but most of the flooding happened in Tin Town. So basically, we said we need to get the water from that nice retention basin we built out to the other end. So they did some redesign. They're also, some of their design had things to do that didn't have, that aren't required in Arizona, so we pulled some of those things, like sound monitoring and things like that. And then, once we got that base bid, we went out the bid again. K-E-G was the only respondent, and we received a very good bid for them for the base bid. And then we looked at some of the bid alternatives, and we looked at some of the other water flow, and we saw there's two areas that, and that's the two alternates there. So we selected those two, so we can get more done than we initially thought we could. One of the benefits is, is that we do have plans completely made and ready to go, so that if my successor has, or somebody finds the funds, we have everything ready to go, all the environmental, everything else has been done. We just need money to complete it. And we also have the plans that maybe in the future, if external money isn't done, we have the plans to do it beforehand. But right now, we're going to take care of a majority of the funding that's in hand.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Hearing, do we have a motion?
I move to approve entering into the contract with K-E and G to complete the Tin Town drainage and pavement project phase two.
I'll second that. Ms. Cornetto?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Item number eight has been pulled because a purpose has been completed. Item number nine, discussion of possible action regarding the employment status of Robert Smith. Do we have a motion going to executive session?
I move you go into executive session.
Thank you. I'll second that. All those in favor going into executive session, signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. I'm sorry, one? I'm sorry, one? Okay. Okay. So that's, that's by the one. We will go into executive session, and that's going to be over in the. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are out of executive session. Do we have any comments or motions?
I move to adopt a preliminary resolution stating the council's intent to remove the city manager pursuant to charter section 3.09.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Ms. Cornetto?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes over to. Item number 10, discussion of possible appointment by mayor and council of an interim city manager. This is listed as an executive session. You wish to go into executive session? If so, make a motion.
I move you go into executive session.
I'm sorry.
I move you go into executive session.
Sorry. We have a motion going to executive session and a second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. By the one. I move you go into executive session. All those in favor of coming out of the executive session signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I move to appoint Stephen Pockham as interim city manager, serving the capacity and plus first time as permanent city manager, appointed and employed, subject to the party's mutual agreement to, what's that? To?
Modifications.
Modifications listed professional services.
Second.
Did you get that?
No, but I will. I'll listen back.
Can I do it again?
It's okay.
No, we're good. Thank you. Ms. Cornetto?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Ms. Johns?
All right, I'll try to keep this short since it's late for all of us. Currently, on the town review board, we have two big things. There have been a few meetings where we've been unable to meet because there hasn't been a quorum. I say "meet" because I'm on right now. Things have gotten held up because...
Things have gotten held up because when Ken Budge reappplied for his position, he was the chair of DRB, and he's been serving on team for 14 years. His application, his reapplication was not brought back before council for approval. And this upset both the board and the council. And what the council would like to do, and I know Ms. Giacamino is in agreement with me about this, is we'd like to see Trent Davis and Ken Budge appointed to the design review board, and think that would be the most reasonable fix to all of this. We'd like to fill the vacancies. We would like to have a quorum. We would like meetings to be had regularly. And so I just publicly asked the mayor to bring those two applications back for us to approve. We think that would be the best solution at this point in time, and to get the DRB rolling, and get things moving for all the contractors in Old Bisbee and Bisbee in general. Thank you.
Thank you. I move to adjourn. I'll adjourn. I'll adjourn. I'll adjourn.